We do have one more public hearing. Item 8B. Hold the public hearing and adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule for 2010, '11, establishing fees for municipal services.
Let's go out there and be public.
Staff, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The master fee schedule sets for the A-type city may recover for cost incurred to provide services requested by members of the community. These fees are developed using cost allocations that we've done after a couple years back.
Sorry. Thank you. Annual each -- each city department reviews its respective user fees and determines if adjustments are warranted for recovery of its costs to provide the services for which the fee is charged. Several adjustments are recommended for the upcoming 2010, '11 fiscal year. San Bruno Cable is looking for an adjustment for its local origination fee for recovery of its programming costs. So that's recommended to increase to $1.90 per subscriber per month. In the community's development department, a fee has been added for residential design guideline reviews. And in the public services department, there is a modification for the special parking restriction, design, and public approval process fee to $221 an hour. This reflects restructure of the personnel that's involved in performing the services. Similarly, the public services hourly rate has been adjusted to reflect the restructure personnel involved in performing the services. And then finally, in the community services department, there are a number of changes. Facility rental rates are standardized to hourly rates and/or applicable. There are separate facility attendant costs associated with different types of rentals. This would be for rentals of the gym, for instance, conference rooms and/or meeting Rental rates have also been added for the senior center conference room and the community room in the rec center. Non-residential rental rates are also standardized at 25% above what the San Bruno residents are paying for rentals. This includes all the indoor facilities, the picnic facilities, and the city pool. The city pool also has now hourly rates associated with lifeguard charges where applicable and also for lane rentals and the use of the small pool. And finally, promotional discounts and incentives, as they are authorized by the Park and Rec Commission, are now identified in the master fee schedule. This is actually a longstanding practice, but it's now being memorialized in the master fee schedule. This is a public hearing, so staff recommends that you take a public comment and obviously we're available to answer any questions that the city council has.
Thank you. Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
I say we open the public hearing.
All right.
I've got a question of staff.
Yes.
Through the chair. Regarding the residential design review fee.
Yes.
Is that only if the projects do not go through any special approvals? The design review fee is -- all projects are going to be reviewed as design review. There is a fee for, you know, for a special approval?
Correct. If it already went through design review through the planning commission process or through the architecture review process, yes, we would not apply that fee.
Okay.
Through the chair, I guess, to ask my questions.
Yes.
A few questions. When we -- under the parks and rec categories, I just want some clarification and some information. Were these prices at all gone over or this proposal gone over with the Park and Recreation Commission and the senior advisory board?
Both the Park and Rec Commission and the senior advisory board. Senior advisory board just for the prices here at the senior center, Park and Rec Commission for all of the prices within chapter nine.
So they're going over, they voted and concurred with these?
They did, and their recommendation was to approve these changes.
Okay. Then, just to help me better understand, I looked under gymnasium, and if I'm reading this right, it was 95 an hour for a resident. Am I seeing that right? Resident and San Bruno nonprofit, and now it is $100 an hour?
That is correct.
Proposed.
Right, that is.
Do -- and we believe the market is bearing that an increase of $100 an hour for a resident trying to have a pickup game or something in the gymnasium?
Correct.
Okay. And could you help me in define when it says, you know, for example, a full meeting room and it says direct costs? Define what direct costs means.
If staff needs to be brought in, building attendant, if there is, we can approximate the usage of the utilities there. The -- those are the fees that would be charged to the San Bruno Park School District. Really, if there's just any cost that the city would incur solely because of the use of -- from the district's use, those would get passed on.
Okay. And I -- maybe it's just me and I'm not adding well here, but I looked at -- the full meeting room was 250 for the four -- first four hours for residents, priority four, and now it's proposed at, is it, am I reading this right, $53 or $63 an hour?
$63 per hour.
$63, so is that, does that equate as to an increase?
That's -- it's just rounded up.
Okay. And I know in the picnic sites, who took the decrease was group five, so your non-residents. So for example, Beckner Row is at this weekend. It was $600, now it's proposed at 375. A resident was at 300, is proposed at 300. So the difference is $75, just giving an example of Beckner Shelter, the largest facility we have in the park. I know it's a 25%, as the finance director said. Does that seem enough of a disparity? Is it because -- what I'm seeing is the resident, the non-resident receiving a great discount. And I'm seeing that the resident is not, is just getting closer to the resident rate. That's my concern.
What we were finding was the non-residents, that no non-residents were renting the facility because of the much higher cost. We still would be giving a preference to San Bruno residents so that they have an opportunity to rent the facility before non-residents. In fact, we're going to extend it so that through a practice of up to 11 months. So here we are in, on June 8th, you can rent the facility up until next May. For non-residents, we will shorten that timeframe to make sure that residents get an opportunity first. But if the facility is there, we would still hope that we can rent it out and generate some positive revenues for the city. At the existing rate, it's just proven to be too high, and we're getting very few rentals.
And then, one final point is that under the senior center assembly room, where I think it's a good thing, is that the rates have gone down for the San Bruno Park School District programs and events, as well as our San Bruno-based organizations. And I think that's been a, when I've been here at events, that they've brought up that it's harder to obviously raise the funds and try to have it go back to the community when in essence the rates were at a level that was not making it economically feasible for them to be here, and they would seek other opportunities like down the road or somewhere to hold their events.
Well, it's still a six-hour minimum. Six hundred bucks.
What, still?
No. Not for two. All right. Any questions?
Michael.
Through the chair. One concern whenever we talk about changing fees is, you know, are we going to drive away any of our customers? And I'm wondering, it certainly says here, "Full cost recovery is the goal," and that certainly is important. We do want to break even at the end of the day. But I'm wondering if, you did mention that you're getting less out-of-city people renting because of the high cost that's being adjusted. Do we have any data on how elastic the demand is for some of these services and whether the price is actually going to impact how many people we get to use the services?
We can pull together information on how many rentals
Okay.
were done in the previous year. When you're saying the costs, I'm not sure if you were referring to, as Vice Mayor Medina was referring to Beckner Shelter specifically, if that's what your reference was also.
It's actually more general, and I'm just wondering, as we go through the planning process, you know, how much consideration do we give that maybe adjusting the fee could be a huge turnoff to the public? And if, I'm just actually more curious, if we actually compile or even have access to any data that would tell us, you know, at this price, so many people were interested. Now that it's gone up, are more people interested or less people interested? What does that actually do? Because, I mean, clearly to get to that break-even point, it's not just the fee, but how many people are willing to pay the fee. So that's kind of the other component of it. I'm just wondering, do we have that information, and if so, has it been reflected in the fees?
I have not compiled that information specifically
Okay.
for any of the departments, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the director, but I believe the director has surveyed other cities in terms of pricing.
We have surveyed other cities for some of the facilities to see what is applicable. We do have collection reports to show in the various rental areas what has been done historically in the past. Obviously, it would be very difficult to find out when people, the reason why people did not contact us if they saw the fee and thought that was too high. But I would point out, most of the fee changes in here are process-oriented rather than a raising of the fees. There's very few fees in here that were increased. As Vice Mayor Medina was pointing out, the one that was, is now $63 an hour, before it was $250 for four hours. We're finding that people didn't want to rent it in a four-hour block. People are asking about three hours and within the fee structure, there's really, we're trying to stay within the fee structure. So to do that, making it as an hourly cost, what we did is then just rounded it to the nearest highest dollar level so that we're not dealing with quarters and 50 cents values in here. So it was not really an increase in the fees, just changing the process to make it easier for both the public that wants to rent the fees, as well as staff in how to apply the fees.
Understood. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Mr. Ibera.
Okay, thank you. Randy, on page 36, where you have the new service groups and the senior center assembly room. Just so I'm clear, you have $38, you have zero, direct cost $38. So $38, and you also say minimum, six-hour minimum rental. So is that?
The six-hour minimum rental would be for the outside groups. Yes.
Okay, so group three, therefore, that is San Bruno-based nonprofit, if they only wanted to rent it for three hours, they could only rent, they only, they're allowed to just rent it for three hours?
Well, one of the thoughts that the senior advisory board, as well as the Parks and Recreation Commission discussed, was this is one of the premier indoor facilities that we have. And to rent it out for a short duration might be lessening the revenue opportunity of a group that's coming in later on for a longer rental. The thought was, most of the time, people are renting this out for wedding receptions, birthday parties, something where it's going to need typically one hour of setup time, four hours of the event, and then an hour for teardown to take away the decorations, et cetera. So that's how the six hours was derived.
Okay. And if my math's right, because you have the old set down here, it's $653, so six times 38 is $228. So it is a substantial savings for the nonprofit groups.
The groups, the, both of the commission, the senior commission and the Park and Rec Commission, did feel as though we needed to lower some of the costs to make it more attractive, but a lot of people were not renting the facility because it was so high-priced.
Oh, I, yes, I concur. I have always thought that, so I think that's a great.
I do want to point out that in very small type at the bottom of the page, it does show that the facility attendant costs, the $15 per hour, are not included in groups one, two, and three. And so that would be added on to the cost. So if somebody was coming in at $38 an hour, on top of that would be the attendant costs, depending on the amount of time that staff is needed here to handle the setup, watch the building, and handle all the ancillary duties during the event, as well as the teardown afterwards.
Can I ask, why would you not want to just incorporate it into the price so you're not saying, "Well, it's 63 plus it's 15 times this to make it more user-friendly." Why would we not just clump it together in one price since we, we review this annually and we could obviously change it if there was an increase into the salary of the part-time staff?
I think we can do that for most of the events. Some of them, the setup is going to be much more extensive, and there's going to be a lot more time that's needed beforehand, two or three hours of staff time beforehand rather than just, I think for a typical wedding reception, the typical birthday party where it's roughly 150 people, I think we can show that to the customer who's coming into the center to rent the facility.
Through the chair.
Yes.
No, it's okay. When we, since this is going to be a new service, right, or new setup?
People have been able to rent the senior center in the past.
So how come it's listed under new service?
No, that's for above.
The new service is for the community room.
Oh, above. I'm sorry.
And there was never a fee that was associated with rental of the community room at the rec center, so that one's a new.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just hope we're clear, I'm with Mr. Medina, that people don't get this $15 per hour additional fee, that it's a surprise to them as they're looking at this, that we're clear when we advertise that this is what it is.
Which is on the fine print.
Yeah.
People don't like that.
That the print is a little bigger, and it's more directly associated with the cost. Because even, even with that, it's still only $318, which is still a bargain, so I just want to make that clear. I think the rest of it is fine.
I'd like to stay, I'd like to stay in this building and this discussion in this building, because when I mentioned during the budget session, I said, you know, I saw the survey of facilities in the county, and there were comparable rental rates. However, there were facilities that allow use of the kitchen, full use of the kitchen. And so, I mean, that has been a bone of contention with groups that I've been dealing with, is that there is no, they're not allowed to use the kitchen. And that is a big hindrance in renting this place, because you either have to bring the food in or you have to hire a caterer. You can't, you know, do a, you can't cook here. Basically, you're not allowed to cook in this facility. So I don't know where we go with that. I don't know, I mean, I'm sure there, and I know there are very, you know, strong reasons why we don't, but it hasn't been discussed, you know, with this body, and I don't know how much it's been discussed with the, you know, Park and Rec Commission. So that said my piece. And as far as rental rates, is Beckner Shelter booked solid during the peak season?
During the peak season, it generally is, yes.
So, because?
Weekends, I'm not, I would not say.
Yes, yeah, and that's what I mean.
Correct.
Because during the peak season, I believe, you have to rent it, even seven days a week, I believe, or is it just the weekends?
You can rent it up to seven days a week.
Okay.
But I don't believe that there's that many rentals on weekdays. And if there is a facility that hasn't been rented out, then it becomes a drop-in, first-come, first-served facility.
Say again?
If there's a picnic area that nobody has rented out, you can then just go use it, but you don't, you don't, you're not able to reserve it ahead of time. It's still a park facility, so you can just.
So is it true, is it true that you used to, during the off-peak season, there was no, there was no collection of fees for Beckner Shelter? That it was just show-up? You can just first-come, first-served?
I'm sorry, that I cannot answer. I don't know the history of that.
And is, and how do you, how do we justify the $300 charge? Is that just the, what the, what the market demands?
What the market would bear, as well as comparisons with other similar picnic sites that were surveyed.
Okay.
Actually, I think the discussion, I was trying to figure out what exactly it was the point that Mr. Ibera brought up about using the kitchen. I would like to see that explored. Maybe it's an added fee if you use the kitchen for cooking, and then that money is separated and put aside for any equipment replacement or something like that, because it's a huge deal not to be able to use the kitchen. And I know that there are groups that would use this place if they could use the kitchen, so.
If I can elaborate a little bit on that, that was probably the largest point of discussion with both the senior advisory board and the Park and Rec Commission. And senior advisory board looks at, what's the difference between this facility and the others that were on the survey that you all had in the packet? And that's really that this is, is one of the only ones, or one of the only two, maybe, that cooks on a regular basis, that we serve 150 to 250 meals here on a daily basis out of that kitchen. Where most of the other facilities are rental halls, they do not do regular food service. And the Park and Rec Commission and their recommendation to the city council, after much discussion, they finally agreed that maybe we should not be using the kitchen for rentals or for cooking purposes. There's storage space in terms of the refrigerator and the freezer. However, if council wishes, we can definitely go back and look at the kitchen use as well as other options.
Through the chair, I'm going to go into history When this facility opened in 1987, I was, one of my tasks when I worked here was renting this out. I worked the very first wedding reception we had out of this facility in August of 1987. And back then, you were able to utilize the kitchen, so it was used. The difference, I think, that has to be wrestled with, is that you had the county supplying the foods, so it was delivered here on-site, it was brought in. As far as storage was concerned in the facility, in the kitchen, there would be space made available in the refrigerator, freezer section, and steam tables and other items that could be utilized. And then over the years, it then became changed. I know now that they're doing a lot of cooking internally here on-location, not going through the county, so now storage is more of a concern. Whether you had an additional freezer unit or refrigeration unit outside the door and enclose it, because there's already an enclosure there to gain access so that they could utilize that. But I do think that is something that I hear when I'm at these events, is that basically they have to cater it in, which is expensive, have it already pre-cooked, which means it gets dry, or utilize the steam table as a bar service area. That's basically what they can, and that is something that does come up frequently. So there is a uniqueness of this facility and what it provides and what is done out of there, so I don't know how that can be dealt with or wrestled with, but I think that is something that we should explore, because I think others would ask for it, and I think the market would bear that this is, that is an issue that turns away some of our folks. The other thing I'm wondering, too, is how the rentals are doing. For example, if we want to take the, in a calendar year, do we have, we have, we'll say 50 weekends, 50 Saturdays in a year. Do we rent out half currently? Do we rent out 25? How many do we rent out in a year?
Of this facility?
Just this facility.
Very few. I don't have a specific number, but private rentals is a handful, three or four per year. To nonprofit groups, it's probably one to two dozen.
Right. And again, I want to live in the past, though, I was only 12 at the time, but it is true that we, I remember this facility, and so many years of it, we rented it out for the, you know, and I worked with that with the city and with Wendy Mines, was that it was busy every weekend. We had part-time staff coming up, rearranging tables and chairs, we had attendants. It went hours and hours. There was a different rate structure, of course, and that was then, this is now. But I will tell you that it was rented minimally every other weekend without fail or exception. And sometimes it was challenging. That's why I questioned the gym rental, because thinking back to the gym rental days when I was there, we had Tuesday nights, Thursday nights, after-open gyms, Saturdays, Sundays, leagues, tournaments. It was so hard for me to even get part-time staff to get there because of the hours, and they were folks that were in college, and so they had things they wanted to do, too. And I don't know if we're still having that type of participation, and that's why I raised the concern of the price for the gymnasium. And then I come back to this facility, I think we are missing the opportunity for some revenue.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I'd like to make it either a motion or a definitive statement to staff to go back and look at different configurations or different options to increase use of, or allow for cooking and for storage if we have to get another unit, and any, and add a different fee structure to that, so if someone wants to cook, they have to pay, I don't know what, an extra $100 or whatever it would be. And then, to alleviate problems with any, any perceived problems with people cooking in there, that money could be earmarked for the kitchen area. It just, I think, I'm with Mr. Medina, I think it would be a much more attractive facility to rent out much more often. When Mr. Ruane and I first got on, that was one of the very first things we looked at, was why did the rental of this, the senior center have a drastic decline? And that was one of the reasons we were told that people were no longer allowed to use the kitchen. So I would like us, I'd like that to come back to us.
Okay. Why don't we do this as a matter of formality, open the public hearing? Any members of the public push to speak? Seeing none, entertain the motion to close.
So move to close.
Question second, all in favor?
Aye.
Counsel, discussion, action.
I'm prepared to approve majority of the proposals. I think most of our discussion was based on chapter nine, and I'm, I'm not happy with passing certain things in chapter nine, so I'd be happy to introduce a resolution without chapter nine, if that was the case. And I'm going to do that. Reduce the resolution to approve the recommended master fee schedule excluding chapter-nine parks and recreation. With the proviso that the committees and staff will take those issues into consideration and come back with some, some discussion or alternatives.
If I could just ask for clarification before the council votes. We clearly heard from several council members the interest in additional review and further discussion by the city council on the issue of rental of the senior center kitchen and rental of the senior center overall. We heard your additional comments and made note of them, but I think staff would appreciate clarification about the particular issues that you would like brought back, other than the senior center ones that I just mentioned.
I guess, I guess I can, I guess we could be more, I can, my, my motion could be more specific, that approve the master fee schedule excluding the rental of the senior center assembly room and kitchen.
I can do, I can do that.
And the only thing I would, I would ask is that, just for user-friendly, when we're saying direct cost, can there be something that says what that is? Because to you and I, we may know what it is, to the average person or the user group or the PTA council, they may not know what that means in then trying to budget the event. And I, and I also go back to what Councilwoman O'Connell and I said, is just, you have it way down here about this doesn't include this, and it just concerns me, because I think as far as the building attendant, and I think that needs to be incorporated. If we're reviewing it annually, I don't know why we need it as a footnote way down as an asterisk at the bottom of the page. I just don't feel it's user-friendly.
At least add it up there.
Yeah. If you want to add it to the sidebar or something, but up top, to where it's, it's obvious.
May I?
I read.
Okay. I understand why you separate out the cost, because there might be an additional cost if you need more attendance time than the six hours. I can understand that, but I just, I feel as Mr. Medina does, that it should be up with the others' costs, so it's just clearer, it's fairer for the residents. Is that?
City council.
If I could just add to the, for clarification purposes, this presentation is unique to the master fee schedule, which is probably not the document that the majority of our facility rental customers are looking for fee schedule information. We will make the change that you've asked for, to move it up and make it more clear. In this document, we will also make sure that it is adequately clear. We will also make sure that it is adequately clear and, and available for people to see on the documents that are circulated through the recreation offices.
She's right.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. So is staff clear in the introduction of the resolution, what it includes and what it does not include? And what we're going to.
Let me just restate that to make sure that we're clear. The motion made by Councilmember Ibera would approve the fees as have been presented, with the exception of the Senior Center kitchen and Assembly Room rentals.
This room here.
Rates. Or, or is it the whole of the Senior Center?
No, just this.
Facility. The main Assembly Room.
Assembly, main Assembly Room.
And the kitchen. And we will bring those back. I'm assuming it's the council's pleasure that you would consider those fees in coordination with your discussion about use of the Senior Center kitchen. Is, is that the intent?
Correct. Okay.
Aye.
City clerk?
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.